Okay, there's a few minutes before 10 on January 8th, 2018. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call, Smiley here. Ham here. Mike Murphy here. Discussion and possible action regarding the election of 2018 officer for the Board of County Commissioner.
I make the resolution, we leave it like it is. You wanna do that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
I'll find that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guess it'll stay as is, and that would be me as chairman, John as vice.
Okay.
We'd be into lunch every time.
Yeah. Okay, number four. Approvable minutes of the last meeting, a special meeting, December 20th, 2017. Have you guys looked over it?
I'm going to approve those.
I'll second.
On favor? Aye. Motion carries. Number five. Discussion and possible action regarding the following road crossing permits for semigas.
Um, I got, looks like about three of those. Like for a 10-inch pipeline. You want some section numbers?
Can you say it's on your morning star sticker? Landmark is really, really good.
Section 3325 north, 13 west.
I don't see any other description of it.
Four miles south of Deuceville.
I don't know what section number.
Oh.
Ain't that good, Lynn? That summer in my area, that's what I can do. Is, is that one on there that that guy came in about?
No.
Okay. That's the only one I'd look back at. If it's not here yet, there you go, maybe you'll see some.
Did you say section 33 of 25? It's gonna be southwest of Deuceville.
Chocktall Road.
They're, they're southwest of Deuceville.
Okay. Or that, that's a town.
13.
Bet.
Southwest of Deuceville is what it's called.
Chocktall Road.
We can get those labels sent to you then.
Okay, well, okay. Now, try this, or you make readers can be a bigger one.
If it's on Chocktall Road, it's all in favor.
Okay.
If it's on Chocktall Road, it's southwest of Green, or south of the Green Valley Church down in there.
Right.
On most of the Simonton area.
Okay, so it's three, no, three instances of.
Canadian, Chocktall. Canadian, Chocktall. Cleveland. I think it's north of 45.
Oh, really?
Cause Cleveland's north of 45.
Oh, okay.
Chocktall would be above it.
Yeah, that's right.
Do you want names?
No.
So, this Chocktall Road is how far north of Highway 40?
45.
Highway 45.
It's at least two mile.
Okay.
It's between Paul and Cleveland.
Yeah, that's true. What, what is that Deuceville? Craig.
Craig.
It's a C also.
Yeah.
But it's a CR. So, it's just south of that, down there.
I wanna say, you know where Mark Vinton lives? I wanna say it's two miles south of Deuceville Road.
Okay. Two miles south of. Yeah, I saw it near his farm or something.
Yeah, cause it's pretty close to.
Close to Vinton's house, if you know where he lives down there, south of Jeremy, that is a mile or so, and then back.
Two miles. Two miles south.
Yeah. But that's about halfway between Deuceville and 281.
Yeah.
And, and south a couple miles.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Two miles. Did you get all the reports in?
Didn't get the shares, so, but I didn't put them on there.
Okay. Number six. No, it's on, approved, disapproved monthly reports for the following successor's office, county clerk, court clerk, health department, treasurer's office, and election board.
I'll approve those.
I'll second.
On favor? Aye.
Aye. I went to school the other day, there's two, three sets of kids out there, drums out there flying around.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Pretty young looking kids. I don't know how powerful they were.
I got a note from the road tech this morning, we got six people signed up for their own class.
Really?
Coming up the 20th, Saturday morning. That's a, we've not made, we've done drum class the last couple of times they've offered. I'm trying to get Charlotte Havering to get the fill order a bunch over there. They have all sorts of fancy drums over there.
Right.
And bring them to that class.
Oh, yeah.
Far more than I have, or just listen to it.
Number seven. Discussion and possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations to split the CBRI account into three accounts, one for each district in the amount of $154,448.42. Split as follows, District Number 1, $43,182.29. District 2, $63,169.24. Then District 3, $48,096.89. And that's, we've essentially been doing that anyway, and that was the reason for the difference in those amounts, is just what we had left in the accounts after we did our road projects at the end of the year.
So, moves.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so if each one of them will sign.
No, correct, those sexes.
Mm-hmm.
Discussion and possible action regarding monthly appropriations.
Say we accept it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Let's start on, see if I can do it.
You guys want to sign at the top to those two places? Thank you. Oh, there's another spot.
Oh, sorry. Third one? Nope, you got one.
David, could you observe how Shelley's doing on her new year's resolution?
I don't have sheen. The temperament would be.
Yeah. So, let's chalk the.
He definitely don't ask for them, so.
[laughing].
I'll learn that. I saw somebody's moving into the yogurt place.
Really?
Yeah.
I heard of it.
I understand we're gonna get a new dress shop in town, up there where twisted knot used to be, the cross.
Oh, yeah.
The gala did work for Daisy Wilkins.
Really?
And then announced that some meeting, too, this all things fabulous, they're gonna put a sort of coffee shop on the west side of the square.
Really?
I'd heard you got a little yogurt thing.
Well, I don't know. Maybe somebody said some kind of art studio. I know that Park Ranch was a art place. That where the turn on to anger jewelry and.
It's where I heard about it.
Oh, really? Well, right to the.
Discussion and possible action regarding to rescind the Resolution 171844, Resolution declaring the intent to consider approval of project plan and creation of a tax increment district, and the Resolution 171845 memorandum of understanding that was were signed on December 4th, 2017. And we found some wording in there that, that needed to be changed as far as the county's involvement in the setting up the committee. And so, everybody agreed and they rewrote, giving the county a little more say on who the members would be on the final committee.
I'm going to motion rescind that.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Number 10 will be discussion and possible action regarding the resolution declaring the intent to consider approval of a project plan and creation of tax increment district or districts under the Local Development Act, directing, directing preparation of project plan, approving a memorandum of understanding between Woods County and the City of Alva, appointing a review committee, directing the review committee to make findings as to be to eligible and financial impact, if any, on taxing jurisdictions and business activities within the district, and directing the review committee to make a recommendation with respect to the proposed project. Okay, that's the same as since we do so.
It's just the amended version.
Right.
Yes.
And we're gonna leave David in the.
Yes, as the person. I'll second that, or did you?
Who, who made it? David, you made it?
Yeah.
What do I need to do?
Second, yeah.
Second?
Yeah.
I'll second.
In all favor? Yeah, aye.
Okay.
Do you wanna stamp this with all three of us on there?
Yeah.
I'll do a little bit.
Good. She knows.
I see her.
Yeah, she's down the hole.
Is there more? Do what?
Just that one?
Just that one, that's the main resolution, and now. Number 11 is discussion and possible action regarding memorandum of understanding between the City of Alva and Woods County regarding the creation of a joint project plan and increment district for districts for the Alva Arena Project.
I'll make the motion we do so.
I'll second.
On favor? Aye. Motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the resolution for free fair board election or elections to be held on January 31st of 2019, and that be an election in each year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Three, three members are up, and, and they have to come file in the county clerk's office, right?
Right. Between January 28th and January 26th, they can come and file, and then the election will be held on the 31st in each one.
Do you need to fix it a dollar?
What was that filing date?
Uh, January 20th.
6th through the 29th.
22nd through the 26th.
Oh, 22nd. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, I was having a little here.
22nd.
22nd through the 26th.
Yeah, the 26th, right.
And then election will happen on January 31st.
And you know the incumbents?
I do know that Craig Schaefer's one of them.
That would be District 1.
District 1, and I think it's.
It would be Tyler.
I'm gonna have to look to make sure.
You're probably gonna send me your boards.
Yes, I'll send it to you. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion we approve this for this election, this election, on favor?
Aye. Is it just one and two?
One, no, it's one in each district.
Yeah.
Always is. There's three of them. There's nine members, and every year, every, the terms are for three years, so every year one of the three years out. Discussion and possible action regarding the District 1 inventory resolution to surplus to trade rotary mowers, ID number D441-111, D441-112, D441-113, to debris implement, and John Deere tractors, ID number D303117, D303118, D303-119, to Western Equipment. David, that's your, those are yours.
Yeah, we traded three for two at debris, and traded three tractors for two tractors.
So, that's a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. On favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Mm-hmm.
Discussion and possible action regarding the District 2 inventory resolution to surplus to trade John Deere tractors, ID number D303-1014, D303-1015, to Western Equipment. I'll make that motion, two tractors, I'm trading for two new ones.
Just second.
On favor?
Aye.
Number 15. Discussion and possible action regarding the District 3 inventory resolution to surplus Chevy trucks, ID number D302-114, and D301-120.
One's, I believe, is a 78 Chevy C60, just a cabin chassis, and then a 70, or the 80.
78.
Yeah. It's a dump truck, a little, two and a half, they're both two and a half tons. One's a dump, got a dump truck bed on it, and the other, and they're both Chevy C60, two and a half tons. Two trucks, basically.
That's for a motion.
Yeah, that's a motion.
I'll second it. On favor? Aye.
I've heard of a lot of these. If you're in here, you're in. Want your own dump truck, you have a chance. There you go. Everybody need, oh, just a little note here on there, wondering what that.
Oh, we just always give a ters.
Just leave it right here.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Number 16. Acknowledgement to the board regarding the election board registration report. That's telling us how many registered Democrats, Republicans, and Independents we got.
Yes.
How many do we got?
Well, I'll look.
One bunch.
Here we go.
I bet you the Republicans outnumber 47%.
Okay.
Pretty precise.
They did that.
Okay, active, we've got 996 Democrats, 2,700 Republicans, 11 Libertarians, and 386 Independents, with a total of 4,093.
4,000, how many?
93.
Awesome, independent.
Well, inactive is 146 Democrats, 316 Republicans, all Libertarians are active, and 116 Independents are inactive, which is 578. I guess the total registered would be 4,671, but I think if you.
Forty, fifty years, yeah.
I think if they haven't voted in a general election for X amount of time, they become inactive.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And that's, so there's 578 that are inactive.
We've had some exciting elections, too.
So, I'm gonna make a motion we approve these, if that's what we need to do.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
I am a Republican. Be interesting to see what it was in 1960. But there was a lot more to it. Most of mine were east side.
East side.
East side over there.
Action today, we'll get back to me.
Okay.
They'll be, probably on the next.
Okay. Okay, number 17. Is discussion and possible action regarding the new bill addition plan, and that's not completed properly yet, so we'll take no action, and it'll be a coming meeting. Okay? Number 18. Discussion and possible action regarding interlocal agreement for Woods County ambulance services. And actually, it's not an interlocal agreement, it's just us giving our blessing for the ambulance services to go anywhere, essentially, our Alva ambulance service to go anywhere in Woods County.
Oh, okay.
They have interlocal agreements amongst themselves.
Right.
Okay? I mean, I, I think it's fine worded on there, bits like that, but it's, this is just our blessing.
Okay.
For a five-year deal that they can do that. I'll make a motion, I'll second, we allow them to.
Yeah.
On favor?
Aye.
Anybody gain new business?
I might have one. This is gave to me after the, I posted, but it was, that, I was asked by David if we could become a member of the chamber, because we can now accept chamber bucks for payments on taxes.
Really?
And, yeah, and if we're not a member, it costs us 5%, I think is what he said. So, he's not able to get all that money. If we become a member, which it's only $100 a year, then we can accept those chamber bucks, and it doesn't cost against that. You know, he, he then goes that 5%. So, he just wanted to know.
What's that 5% total up to? $99?
I don't know, but, you know, 99. Really, I mean, I'm surprised we aren't, I mean, I, I think we used to be an active member, and I don't know when it stopped, but.
Well, I thought we're asking. This is, I understand this is under due business, but.
Well, we could really do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't make that motion.
My, I think that, I'm not against it, I'm for it, but I think we, I probably ought to go check with the agency that it's legal for us to be a member.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Great idea. Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up.
Because if they do any lobbying or stuff.
I know.
I just don't know if, if the county, we should spend that $100 taxpayer money to be.
To be, right.
Lobbying organization.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just not sure, I need to check.
Yeah, check on it.
And like I say, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't know the legality of it.
Right.
I think you're smart, too.
Yeah. I do, too. Yeah.
Tell me what the hell that's about.
Oh, that's their, that's the school's money. The money, the taxes are coming in, so they're getting.
All that are getting kids in our, our school district.
That'd be that deal across the river, where they collected the taxes in major county, but it comes back here because of their Inwinoka School District.
Yeah, well, then, yeah, and then we got. Well, then, yeah, and then we have to pay Major down, yeah, their share. That's okay.
Okay, number 20, is that all the new business we have?
I don't have any.
Okay. Number 20, approved, disapproved blanket purchase order.
Do we approve those?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
And number 21, that's been a while since we went that far, uh, motion to adjourn.
Oh, we got a little time.